We would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. We'd also like to welcome all those who might be here in chambers or viewing through our YouTube channel or through Zoom. Once again, welcome to all. I'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
President.
Vice Mayor Samley. Councilmember Dykens.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to stand and participate in our invocation, which will be given by Pastor Dennis Cronkite of College Park Baptist Church, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that you give us day by day. Every breath we draw, we recognize is not an accident, but from you, so we count our lives as yours and each day is a gift. And Father, we thank you for this city, for those who represent us in various forms of government and, of course, this council that we meet with today. Pray, God, your blessing and your favor upon them as well as others who lead in this city and its government. And pray, Father, that we would always be looking beyond ourselves, above ourselves, to recognize that there is one who gives us wisdom and one who gives us the understanding to make good decisions that will benefit others, be a blessing, and will have also the favor of God. And so, we seek thee today, tonight, and ask for your favor upon this meeting and each one who participates. And we thank you for Christ, who has done all for us and given us salvation through his sacrifice for us. So, we ask this with thankfulness in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, awards recognition. A Arizona Drug Summit: Keeping Hope Alive, Community Impact Award Presentation for the Kingman Walk Away from Drugs. The City of Kingman and Kingman Area Meth Coalition were recognized at the Arizona Drug Summit held on September 3rd, 2025, with the Keeping Hope Alive Community Impact Award for their annual Walk Away from Drugs event. This event has been a staple in Kingman for the last 19 years, providing the community with an opportunity to come together and take a stand against substance abuse. The Kingman Walk Away from Drugs event is the largest and longest-running event of its type in the state. Turn some time over to Annie.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins, council. I'd like to invite Bob De Vries up to join me. He and I attended the Arizona Drug Summit last week, where we were honored to receive this beautiful award on behalf of the City of Kingman and the Kingman Area Meth Coalition for the Walk Away from Drugs. This award is specifically for community impact, which is pretty phenomenal. The walk started in 2006. It was a community challenge from Bullhead City during a time where meth was rampant in our area to see who could create the largest substance abuse prevention, education, resource event in the area. Well, Kingman took that challenge very seriously and have had, I have had the honor to chair that event for the last several years. Our event, like you said, is the largest and longest-running of its type in the state, even so that other coalitions around the state have asked us, like, what is our model? How do we get the community involved and things like that so that they can try to duplicate it in their communities? This event is put on solely by volunteers and funded through community donations. And most recently, the council approved a small portion of our opioid settlement monies to go towards this event as well, so that we can just keep making it bigger and better. What has made this event so successful, though, really is the businesses in our community supporting it, the organizations that come to the table and help plan it, the city, there are several city departments, police, fire, public works, parks, that all come together in support in making this event happen, the schools, and definitely our community. We definitely look forward to seeing everybody on October 15th for the 19th Annual Walk Away from Drugs event. And I just want to say that, really, this isn't a Kingman Area Meth Coalition award. This is a community award. So, congratulations. And then, if Bob has anything he would like to share.
No, Mayor and council. I couldn't agree with Annie more. We were really honored to get this award, but it truly is a community award. We're just the planning committee. The community is what makes this event successful year after year and looking forward to the 19th and even looking more forward to 20th. And we can now tell our other sister cities that we are an award-winning event that has beat them 18 years in a row, looking for 19.
And that's always a good thing.
So, I would like, if you guys have questions, I'm happy to, but I would like to ask if you would be willing to come down and get a picture with us. Sarah has graciously, as part of our outreach for our event, will be issuing a press release for us, and we'd like to include that with it.
Great, thank you. And once again, congratulations to everybody involved. Counsel, any comments, questions? Okay, then we are needed for a picture.
Can't hide back there. Y'all can come down. There's not that many of us. You don't have your spots. Perfect. Perfect. And hold this and I'll...
Actually, you and Bob should be holding this.
Here, trade me spots. We're good.
Okay, because, yeah.
Thank you. I support Annie. The next one's mine, too.
Item number two, presentations. A Kingman Youth Academy Council update. The Kingman Youth Advisory Council will introduce their 2025-26 officers and new members. They will also provide counsel with an update on their priorities for fiscal year 2025 and '26. Clerk Meredith, welcome again.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I would like to invite my youth council members that were available to come this evening to come forward. I would like to introduce the officers that are here this evening. We have Clementine Wilcox. She is our 25-26 chairperson. June Staley is our co-chairperson. And Elias Wilcock is our treasurer. And so, I'm actually going to turn it over to them. This is their presentation to you guys.
And let's not forget the other young lady. Did you introduce her? Since she's not an officer.
I'm gonna let her introduce herself.
Okay, good.
This is Clara Brandt. Clara is new with us. She is a new council member with us this year.
Well, once again, welcome all of you. We're glad you're coming to council to share.
Good evening, Mayor Watkins and council members. We wanted to share with you some of the projects that we have identified this year. First, I will share the projects that we have identified as annual events for the youth council. The first one, a coat and hoodie drive for local youth and a bedding drive to aid in our partnership with Sleep and Heavenly Peace. The second one, adopt a park. We have committed to cleaning a portion of Centennial Park once a month, then the skate park once a month. The third one, bed builds. We are partnering with Sleep and Heavenly Peace to do bed builds and deliveries as needed. The fourth one, retailer compliance checks. We are partnering with the Attorney General's Office and the FDA in their Counter-Strike Program to help reduce youth access to nicotine products. The following projects are ones that we have identified as additional small projects slash partnership opportunities that we would like to do as well. The first one, an animal shelter adoption day. The second, a homeless shelter volunteering, such as serving meals at Thanksgiving and Christmas and humanitarian kits and bags. The third one, participate in Kingman Care, Care's Cleanup Days. This is coming up on September 20th from 8:00 to 11:00 AM. The fourth, fundraise for a kayak graduating senior scholarship that would be available to all the graduating seniors in this community, with the exception of kayak members. Some ideas we have to fundraise for this are a bake sale, talent show, and creating a donation link. The fifth one, a Walmart/Wash mural. The sixth, youth outreach through QR codes, social media, and youth events. If anyone would like to partner with us on these items, they can reach out to Annie and she will coordinate that for us. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Watkins and council members. I'm Elias Wilcock, the treasurer for the Kingman Youth Advisory Council. I wanted to share with you guys today some of the things we have been doing as well as some upcoming projects and meetings we have set. The first one, we had five youth council members attend the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference, where we were able to participate in the historic parade of flags with Mayor Watkins and then attend leadership sessions that will be valuable to building our team. We had also had five members attend the Sleep and Heavenly Peace Build last Saturday, where the team prepared materials for 13 beds that will be assembled and later distributed to local youth. We attended the first Friday, the August 1st Friday event, where we were able to get our name out there and interact with the youth in the community. We have completed three-part cleanup since our last year started in July and will continue to do them two times a month. We are doing a publicity campaign, where every few days, we are introducing a different member of the youth council on Instagram. If you aren't already, find us and follow us for updates. We will be participating in the Kingman Day of Caring in partnership with the Clean City Commission on September 20th. We have a meeting set with the manager at Walmart to talk about partnering to hopefully replace the graffiti on the block wall behind their building that faces the wash with a nice mural. We will be inviting the different departments from within the city to come to our council meetings to give us kind of a mini citizens academy, so we are all well-informed in how the city operates and can share that information with the community. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to giving another update in a few months.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Great. Well, once again, yes. I know it's difficult to get up here and share in front of council, but we're very proud of you. And this is another way of, you know, learning some of these talents and giving you opportunity to expand your horizons. So, we appreciate all that you're doing in our city and the list of events that you've done already that you've already been doing and continue to do will make such an impact on our city. Thank you. Annie, do we need a picture with our youth council?
If you would like to.
I would. Counsel, is that all right? I think we're very proud of you. And, you know, once again, I was very proud of them at the National League of Cities and Towns Conference. The state one, so the league was great.
Guys can stand right in the middle. Elias, I can't believe how fast you can run.
I will stand next to the vice mayor. We'll go over here and stand behind them. I hear you. You good?
That's good.
Okay. Once again, all of you. Appreciate it. Good job. Item number three, call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Tonight, we have Donna Peterson. Would you like to share with us? Donna?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to talk tonight about the Grandview Pool. And we've been residents of the Kingman for over 50 years. So, our children grew up in the Grandview Pool. And in the past year or so, the Grandview Pool has just been down to bare bones. There's nothing there for the kids except a pool and some plastic chairs. And I did talk to the director at Parks and Recreation about it, and he told me that they were going to put it in the liner and they will be investing some money down there. And I just wanted to encourage the council to please follow through on that with the Grandview Pool. Families enjoy it. There's a waiting pool there for the little ones that we don't have at other places. And the downtown area really needs it for its young people and all who enjoy aquatics and stuff. So, that was it to say thank you very much for supporting the downtown area. We just ask that the Grandview Pool be restored. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, for your comments. Item number four, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The city manager and I want to pull 4D for clarification, so that will be pulled off the consent agenda. Counsel, any other items that need to be pulled? G. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, council members. So, can we have a motion then approving our consent agenda except for items D and G?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 4D, approval to purchase Surbet Cliff's Driving Range Lighting. This purchase is for the Surbet Cliff's Driving Range Lighting. City staff is requesting to utilize Musco Sports Lighting LLC for this project utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Number 041123-MSL. The cost of the replacement is $129,999 plus any applicable permitting fees from the Capital Projects Fund. Staff recommends approval. Turn some time over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On this item, the reason for pulling it is we had an incorrect statement in there. The cost is not for a replacement, but rather for new lighting there. So, just wanted to make that clear to the council.
Thank you, city manager. I then make a motion that we approve item 4D, approval to purchase Surbet Cliff's Driving Range Lighting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 4G, agreement for engineering services for intersection improvements at Walupi Mountain Road and Eastern Street, ENG 25-0061. On February 25th, a February 2025 traffic impact analysis prepared by Greenlight Traffic Engineering indicates the need for a traffic signal at the intersection of Walupi Mountain Road and Eastern Street within six years. Also warranted in the analysis are a westbound right turn lane from Walupi Mountain Road onto Eastern Street and a southbound left turn lane from Eastern Street onto Walupi Mountain Road. Hewitt Zollers Incorporated has provided a cost proposal for the intersection improvements. This project was not budgeted in the fiscal year 2025-26 adopted budget and five-year capital improvement plan, but there is sufficient budget capacity within the Capital Projects Fund to cover the project's cost of $85,100. Staff recommends approval. Mike, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Dykens. This is a cost proposal. And I want to apologize. I think maybe it's not clear, but the $81,000 is, or $85,000 is just for the design. The actual improvements themselves are much more than that. But we wanted to go ahead and get the design started. This came about because there's a project going in on that corner. I guess it's the northwest corner. And while the traffic signal is not warranted at this point, after the construction of that project and a few years down the road, it will be warranted. So, we want to go ahead and get the design started. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Counselor Dykens, I know you want this item pulled.
Regardless of what the traffic impact analysis said, I think it's a very needed installation at that intersection. I'm very much in favor of it. But my question is, are crosswalks and the signaling devices for crossing going to be installed also?
Yes. Mayor Watkins, Councilman Dykens, part of the intersection, but the intersection, once you get the traffic signal there, the federal regulations on how the intersection's supposed to work, mandate that you put a crosswalk there along with the wait, the wait lights and all that. So, all that'll be there once it's done.
Okay. Because it wasn't written specifically that crosswalk was going to be included. I just wanted to be sure that was.
And Counselor Dykens, to your point, that's a very critical intersection, especially with the school down the street and the apartments on the other side of Walupi Mountain Road. I totally agree. In fact, you can ask our city manager. I've been bugging him for probably a year or more because citizens have been calling, I'm sure all of us, saying we need a light there at Walupi Mountain Road and Eastern. So...
Well, I started about within 30 days of being sworn in pursuing that. And so, I'm thrilled to see this happen.
So, it is. And hopefully, we get it done sooner than that six-year mark. I mean, because it's going to get busy once that business does open up there. So... Okay, any other questions for Mike? Yes, Counselor Savage.
Not so much a question. When is that project supposed to be complete?
The project in the corner or the...
Yes.
That's a really good question. They were, really seemed like they were ready to go about three or four months ago. And we got a site plan submitted, but I haven't seen any construction plans or anything since then. So, I'm not real sure.
So, it's up in the air?
It's kind of up in the air.
My concern is that with the school there, I have a feeling, well, just down Eastern, that the crosswalks and the interchange or the traffic lights are going to have to be in a lot sooner than six years because you have children living on the other side of the street. They're going to be leaving school and walking across this Walupi Mountain Road. So, I don't know how we came about six years to have it done.
Mayor Watkins, Councilman Savage, it really is based on, there's a whole manual that the federal government puts out on how you do traffic signals, how they're warranted, how you design them, all of that. It's mandated by the federal government. It's actually, there's a CFR for it that says, this is how you do it. And so, the traffic signal warrant is based on that. And I think what it shows is that it'll actually be warranted in the next five to six years.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Great. Our Counselor Dykens would like to make a motion approving item 4G.
Make a motion to approve item 4G.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item five, action items. A, presentation and discussion of the 2025 Economic Development Strategic Plan. The City of Kingman Economic Development Department, in collaboration with Chabin Concepts, will present the proposed 2025 Economic Development Strategic Plan. This updated strategy builds upon the foundation of the 2019 plan and reflects current economic conditions, community input, and organizational priorities. It includes an overview of accomplishments achieved since that prior plan, introduces new strategic goals, and outlines actionable strategies designed to strengthen Kingman's economic position. And staff recommends approval. Terry, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. In 2018, your vision and forward-thinking, the city established the Economic Development Department, launching a journey that has transformed how Kingman approaches economic growth. Soon after, with your support, we partnered with Chabin Concepts to create our first Economic Development Strategy Plan, which was completed in 2019. It has been our working, living, breathing document, guiding our efforts, fueling real results, and continuing to shape Kingman's economic future. Thanks to your commitment and staff's dedication to following your lead, we actively use this plan. It has never just sat on a shelf like others' strategic plans who get put on the shelf and are forgotten. Your willingness to invest in economic development laid the foundation for progress we would never have achieved otherwise. As time passes, new opportunities emerge, and an outside perspective helps us see what we might miss while immersed in our daily work. To keep building on the foundation you helped set, we again engaged Chabin Concepts to refresh the plan and chart our path through 2030. Tonight, we are proud to present this updated strategy and investment made possible by your vision, your support, and your steadfast belief in Kingman's potential. We would not be where we are today without you guys. I have the pleasure of introducing you to Thatch Moyle from Chabin Concepts, who will walk us through the updated Economic Development Strategy Plan. Thatch.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to present. I think we've got some exciting stuff to share. Just updates in, you know, the traction you all have gained over the course of the last six years. It's definitely trending in the right direction, and there's opportunities to kind of continue with that, with that growth. Kind of the theme we sought for the 2025 updates, looking at connecting people, property, and potential, both for job creation, looking at, you know, growing the household base, and then also the place-making you all have done downtown. Just what all's been done, but then where there's also opportunities. As Terry spoke to the kind of evolution where things have come since 2018, 2019, in 2019 to 2021, kind of building that foundation. You know, you certainly hired the staffing for the economic development team, established that strategy, formalized the Economic Development Department, and then started to understand kind of what is a department and what does a city that is ready to grow and to accept investment? What does that look like? Continuing on 2021 to 2023, kind of expanding on that foundation, what specific sectors should the city target? You know, whether it's commercial attraction, industrial, building a business retention expansion program, expansion program, um, engaging retail coach for more of the, the commercial retail side, um, and then the ACA and, uh, Community College, engaging with all of them. Over the last couple of years, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, um, aligning those strategic targets, um, and then measuring those results, kind of where do we stand now, um, showing where you've had collaboration across the, both the city, but then also the kind of regional level, um, and how's that, the, the EDAC and the other agencies and departments, um, leverage that to build some of these foundational pieces. Then as we stand now, um, understanding the current strengths, um, with a city of this size, it's remarkable that you have, uh, the full-time staffing for economic development. Um, a lot of jurisdictions we work with of a hundred thousand have maybe a, a part-time staffer doing both community development and economic development. So the fact that you all have gone behind and really understand, you know, this is how you grow a sustainable economic development base, um, pretty remarkable. So kudos to you all. Um, looking forward, positioning for the next, you know, certainly the next five years, um, continuing with that growth trajectory, um, getting your name out there, um, what specific investment things do you need? Um, certainly there's been a ton of investment with downtown, but then also the interchanges. Um, so you want to promote that and just, you know, let folks know what you are doing and what, where you are getting all that, the capital investment. And then telling business, listen, this is how we, where we are competitive, where we have an edge over some of the other jurisdictions, whether it's, you know, in the region or statewide, um, and just continuing with that message. Just some of the metrics we were looking at, um, since two thousand nineteen, you've had eleven percent population growth. So you're showing kind of the expanding market, um, and working with regional or national, uh, developers, commercial retailers, um, they want to see that growth. Since two thousand twenty-four, you've had one point two billion dollars in taxable sales, um, showing that strong spending metric. Um, sixty-six percent growth in the trade sector jobs, you know, a lot of that stuff you'll see out of the airport industrial area. Um, you're seeing all that. I mean, there's, there's not many sites left, um, but that growth is pretty remarkable. So you want to parlay that. Um, with AMTC coming online, that is aligning kind of that, that workforce, um, with the industry. And you're working hand in hand to understand what does industry need, you know, where might there be shifts where we can, um, set at the AMTC to, to align with, with some of these industries. Um, but that's remarkable. And again, that needs to be leveraged. Um, I spoke to the, the infrastructure investments, certainly the interchange improvements, um, the broadband, some of the other utility expansion work, um, site readiness projects, um, what we call a shovel-ready. Um, our, on our team, we had a, a corporate site selection expert who kind of identified where there's certain gaps, but then also where, you know, you've done a great job with setting up the infrastructure to serve, um, the sites that are in place. Um, and then kind of looking kind of larger, longer trajectory, there's the I, I forty trade port corridor future, um, you know, continuing to be an active participant in that. Um, the news, the announcement of the, the coworking entrepreneur hub, um, you know, kind of having a centralized streamlined office to support and grow, um, small business, economic development, and, um, wave. I think that's going to be great, and you should continue to tell that message. Um, and then from sort of, uh, place-making side and the, the historic cultural piece, um, the historic landmark inventory, uh, Lewis Art Park, um, you wanted to, you want to tell that story and just tell the history of this area and the, the cultural aspects of that. Just looking at the mission, the goal, um, kind of to focus our efforts. Um, the mission was to activate the land, the partnerships, the talent, and the place-making that draws on Kingman's cultural and heritage assets, um, to build a thriving inclusive economy and exceptional quality of life. Then looking at, you know, how can we kind of stand apart or how can we make a, a statement to, to separate us? Um, we want to position Kingman as Northwest Arizona's leading destination for advanced industry, uh, with vibrant commerce, a rich cultural heritage, and exceptional quality of life, um, that's kind of celebrated through the arts, historic preservation, and a distinctive sense of place. Looking at what this plan is not, um, because, you know, you've had so much success with two thousand nineteen, and there's been some, um, internal updates over the course of the last six years, this is not a complete rewrite. Um, we're building on the successes and the strategies that are kind of already in place. Uh, it's not a static or one-time effort. As Terry alluded to, uh, this is going to be continuing, continuing to evolve, you know, with shifting market conditions, um, opportunities that come online, you know, with FAA land release and other opportunities, um, of that ilk. And then, you know, there'll be shifting community priorities, whether it's council kind of guiding that, um, or if, you know, stakeholders engage and say, listen, we'd like to see this, whether it's economic development or place-making or whatever. Um, what this plan is, it's a refinement and a focusing tool, sharpening those actions that are already in place, um, taking those resources like the AMTC, like all the, all the investment you've had downtown, um, and building on that strong foundation that's already in place. We like to chart it out as a strategic roadmap. Over the last six years, you've done great work, and to highlight that, to champion that, and just show that you are, you know, setting things up for the next five years, ten years, and down the line. Um, and then continuing to position Kingman with a competitive regional landscape. Um, you know, every city, it, it's good to partner, but it's also, how do you separate yourself from some of the other, um, jurisdictions within the area? And with all the growth you've had and all the, um, the wins you've had over the last five, six years, you're now kind of growing into what we call a tier-two regional hub, which is a greater player in the regional and the, uh, state landscape. We like to focus, we kind of call this, it's a three-legged stool, um, where you have the traded sector, which is primarily your, your industry, um, you know, with the quality jobs. There's a local serving market, that's your retailers, um, personal services, um, and then there's a visitor-driven market with Route sixty-six, you know, the tourism dollars, how are you bringing that to the table? Um, so that, that sets the landscape for what we call the three economic drivers, the three-legged stool. Um, and then kind of on the outer ring, you're looking at these, these influences that shape each of those. Um, I don't need to speak to each of those, but, you know, your real estate portfolio, what does that look like for the, particularly for the traded sector, but then also for the local serving market? Um, it's all, you know, through place-making, infrastructure investments, added housing, being smart financially, and providing workforce development, education, um, those all contribute to these three kind of anchors of your, of your economy. Um, and looking at your competitive position, um, I think most of you know these, but the strengths, um, logistically, you have I forty, the future I eleven, um, great rail connectivity for east-west, um, you know, across, across the region, but then also kind of interstate. Um, and looking at land costs, you're certainly competitive, and there are some available sites, and certainly the FAA release, you'll have more of those sites, um, coming online. The workforce pipeline, um, through MCC and AMTC, that's growing. Um, you know, it's a great tool with the AMTC, and, um, the partnership you all have had with MCC has been fantastic. I know Kelly's leaving or has left, but hopefully that can be stewarded forward. Uh, broadband infrastructure, all that investment that's gone on over the last, uh, couple of years is, is fantastic. And that's just to position yourself as a key player, you know, to have that, um, as a tool. Then as we spoke to, you know, the highly collaborative, proactive, uh, economic development team, they're dynamic, um, you know, they're all kind of focused on different parts of economic development, and that's fantastic. Um, what we've identified as constraints, which certainly lead to opportunities, um, there's, there's a shortage of large rate to build sites and buildings. Um, when you search, whether it's on LoopNet or some of the other sites, there's a lot of commercial, just general commercial sites, um, but not what we'd see as site-ready. Um, and certainly within the industrial landscape, um, there's not that many large sites available. Um, I know you all are working on the FAA release, and I think that's going to be fantastic if and when that comes to fruition. Um, infrastructure gaps at key sites, you know, certainly water, sewer, and power upgrades, um, were identified more as gaps. Um, but the Economic Development Department is aware of that, and I think they're growing to, to address those. Um, as a, you know, as, as a city of your size, and certainly what we're seeing across the, certainly across the West and, I guess, across the nation is workforce shortages, um, it's, it's targeting which specific industries, which specific, um, employees and, and groups, um, need that assistance, and how you can work with AMTC to, um, to grow that support industry, which you all are doing. It's just, we kind of see that as a, as both a constraint, but then also an opportunity. And looking at the specific economic centers and what we call the corridors, um, there are a ton of centers, you know, certainly the trade sector, which with primarily the airport industrial area, local serving market, all the commercial centers you have, um, and of course, the, the visitor-driven sector, um, downtown Route sixty-six, some of the recreational assets. Um, what we saw as, see as established hubs are the Airport Industrial Park, North Stockton Retail, um, Kimian Regional Medical Center, the Medical District, um, and then downtown Route sixty-six. The key corridors, Flying Fortress, you know, the potential for South Kingman Crossing, um, if and when that is unlocked, that's a great area for kind of the targeted, um, the commercial, but then also kind of mixed-use piece. Um, so continue to, to work to, to, uh, to build that. Um, there's a, a strong tourism appeal with downtown, uh, Westfield Gateway, certainly the upcoming Centennial, um, that's a great opportunity. Um, don't want to beat a dead horse, but one of the constraints that could lead to opportunities is limited available building inventory, um, you know, looking to promote infill, adaptive reuse. Um, there are gaps in the corridor connectivity and place-making. Um, you know, some of the commercial centers you see, there's not, some of the signage and the, the wayfinding is maybe lacking to kind of define an arrival to a specific commercial center. Um, so we could look, you know, look to less cost, um, intensive ways to, to, to work with that. Um, and then some of the high-potential sites do lack infrastructure. Um, so looking at how you can prioritize and kind of efficiently extend the service to create shovel-ready sites. And looking at the traded sector strategic actions, um, I'll just kind of blow through this because we addressed this, but expand the industrial site readiness. Um, FAA release is going to be great. Um, continue with the workforce development, all the traction with AMTC, um, and working with the employers to understand, you know, where there's been market shifts or whatever. Um, the tier-two regional hub position, um, in doing comparative costs, you know, even just a little matrix to show, you know, how we compare to other players in the region, um, and then also how you are kind of a key corridor and hub relative to Phoenix, Vegas, and Southern California. With Patriot Rail and the, the transloading, um, facility, that should be leveraged and promoted. Um, and then there's the, the I forty, I eleven access for supply chain efficiency. As it relates to local serving strategic actions, um, you know, there is, there's certainly a gap, um, where retail's not, you know, people are having to travel outside of Kingman for, for shopping opportunities. Um, so continue targeting these second-tier chains and brands that fit with the current demographics, um, pursue some of the hospitality concepts that are tied to tourism, you know, Josh is working on that. Um, the thought of a healthcare hub, um, bringing all of the healthcare-related employers together, um, looking at the expansion of services linked to care and see, um, certainly with aging population, what do they need? Um, and just grow and support the, you know, what we see as the medical office development realm. Um, with the SBDC, you know, continue to support, um, small business pathways. Um, one concept we've kind of promoted is this pop-up to permanent and adaptive reuse programs in downtown to kind of activate downtown more. Um, and then along the retail corridors, work on a, what we call a new incubator program. Support entrepreneurial finance. Continue leadership with the Entrepreneur and Coworking Hub. Um, look to grant microloan programs that will fill the, the gaps for some of the small businesses in the community. Okay, and then as it relates to the visitor-driven strategic actions, um, enhance the Route sixty, the Route sixty-two experience, um, encourage the theme retail around, uh, around that, the signage and events tied to the Centennial. I know this is on, well, Economic Development, Josh's radar, um, you know, and working with some of the other cities along the, the corridor. Um, so continue to lean into that and maximize that, that well-known brand. Um, the lodging opportunities, there needs to be a diversification in that, um, the thought of boutique hotels, glamping, um, unique stays, those are kind of being, um, hot trends that, um, you should look to try to attract and, um, build on the visitor experience. The destination events, um, car culture, outdoor recreation, seasonal tourism, you know, I know there was a kind of a Comic-Con event that was held that was very successful, I think, you know, looking, kind of thinking outside the box for some of those elements. Um, and then the cultural heritage place-making, um, Kingman's public art, the historic preservation, and the cultural assets, just to define, you know, and tell the story, what makes Kingman unique, to attract folks to the community and especially to downtown. Um, as I think you all have, have seen and you all have certainly supported, um, taking bold action. Kingman's leadership has always been forward-thinking, um, kind of going through the lens of understanding where can we be if we lead, invest, and take bold actions. Since two thousand nineteen, the key successes, you've had the capital investment with downtown revitalization, um, Flying Fortress Interchange, the upcoming federal land release, um, you know, the announcement of the coworking entrepreneurial hub, AMTC, and then the continued support of the public art and historic preservation. Kind of continuing that trend, um, these action items, to boost competitiveness, you need to strengthen your sites, um, continue investment in infrastructure and the workforce, um, to continue kind of your hold on that, that tier-two regional hub status. Um, look to continue to activate the key centers, um, which corridors or which areas do you want to kind of focus on to, to grow and support? And then there's the, the trade sector, um, target industries that match Kingman's assets and cost advantages. Certainly with the airport out there, continuing to grow, maybe aviation and aerospace. Um, and then look at continued kind of hubs in the, uh, Airport Industrial Park. For the local serving market, expanding retail, healthcare, and those small business and entrepreneurs within the community. And then as it relates to the visitor economy, um, building those amenities, promoting those events, and then kind of getting your, your marketing messaging out there. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, again, I just want to stress that all of your efforts and your support, I think, have really done amazing, robust things over the last six years, um, to continue to support that. And it's pretty remarkable for all the investment you all have gotten over the last six to seven years, and things are trending in the right direction. So I think you're, uh, you're doing well. Any questions?
Thank you, Thatch, for that presentation. Council, any questions for Thatch or for Terry, or comments? Okay, same thing.
Great.
We're good.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay, um, we need a motion then, or is there any more discussion on item five A of our Economic Development Strategic Plan? I think Thatch did a pretty good job of, of where we want to continue moving with this. Okay, can we have a motion then approving item five A?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Five B, approval ordinance number one nine eight one, amending the city's street regulations to clarify the curb requirements for street improvements related to commercial projects. The current version of the street regulations say that a vertical or rolled curb can be used on streets with a local classification in the City of Kingman. This has led to some inconsistency with regard to street improvements related to commercial projects. For commercial projects that require street improvements, it is the position of the Engineering Department that vertical curbs should be used. This encourages proper channelization of traffic into the parking area and discourages vehicles from driving across landscape and other areas not designated for traffic. The ordinance allows for some exceptions, which must be approved by the city engineer. Staff recommends approval. Mike, welcome again.
Good morning, uh, good, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Uh, I just wanted to sort of reiterate, reiterate what this proposed ordinance is about. It's essentially there, uh, to, to clarify some language we have in the street regulations, which are a little bit vague. Right now, they say that for a local street, either a vertical or rolled curb may be used, and the discretion is more or less left up to the designer, and it's kind of resulted in a non-uniform application where it's not clear why one curb was used versus the other one. Um, for commercial lots, engineering best practice is to use a vertical curb, uh, which is designed to encourage drivers to, to, uh, to enter the parking lot in the designated access point. This prevents drivers from jumping the curb and driving over areas not designated for traffic, such as landscaping and ADA paths. This ordinance clarifies that vertical curbs should be used for commercial lots, and is, uh, exceptions can be approved by the city engineer. This would most likely apply to commercial lots with existing buildings, existing parking lots, where street improvements are required as a retrofit. That's where we would probably do the exception. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for Mike? Okay, can we entertain a motion then for item five B, approval of ordinance number nineteen eighty-one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mike. Five C, approval of ordinance number nineteen eighty-two, amending the street regulations to clarify terms for vacation of public rights-of-way containing public utilities and/or other features. The current version of the street regulations prohibits vacation of public rights-of-way or right-of-way easements that contain public utilities and other features like canals and ditches. This amendment would allow vacation of those rights-of-ways and rights-of-ways easements if utilities and other features were relocated and/or legal access to them was maintained through the granting of appropriate easements. Staff recommends approval. Mike, again.
It's me again.
This is the Mike Gorman Show tonight.
Okay, so again, this is, uh, something basically just to clarify, um, the, the street regs. Um, right now, the current regulations say that rights-of-way containing existing utilities shall not be eligible for vacation. So, uh, the city does, we've, I've been, I mean, I've been here for a couple of years, and I've probably been approached about this maybe a dozen or so times. Uh, the city doesn't really have- The city doesn't really have any discretion because it says shall, and that's kind of the end of it. So this ordinance would make it possible for the city to vacate these rights-of-way if the access to the utilities were preserved, either by relocating the utilities or preserving the access in an easement. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer those.
Comments or questions?
Yes.
Counsel Savage.
This might be a little off the wall, Mike. Does this pertain to like the trails we're going to put on long utility easements?
Mayor, Councilman Savage, no, this is more or less where we have, in a lot of cases, it's, it's dirt roads that hasn't, there haven't been any development there, and you've got water and sewer and sometimes electrical utilities there. And an adjacent landowner wants to use that right-of-way for, to, to add on to their project for development. And in, in some cases, it kind of makes sense what they're asking for, but our hands are kind of tied because we're, we're not really allowed to vacate those, those rights-of-way.
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Can we have a motion then approving item five C, approval of ordinance number nineteen eighty-two?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five D, approval of ordinance number nineteen eighty-three, repealing section two dash two four from the city code, approval of privilege and use tax increases by electors. The staff drafted ordinance number nineteen eighty-three to repeal section two dash two four, approval of privilege and use tax increases by electors. With the removal of this section from the city code, the city council will have the flexibility to adjust the transaction privilege tax, TPT, to address pressing concerns regarding the significant, critical needs that are paramount to the economic success of the city of Kingman. Counsel discretion. Turn some time over to our city attorney, Carl.
Yep, that would be me. I don't know if I have a whole lot to expand unless you have some questions. Again, this is looking to modify that section of the city code that we had been, was brought forward to us by the electorate with some recent litigation out of Payson. This allows us to make modifications to that code. So it, with the discussions that we had, brought this back for counsel to decide if they want to make those modifications by repealing that section, which then, as the description noted earlier, gives you that flexibility. You're always struggling to find resources to pay for the expanding services and needs that the community is looking for, and this will give you that opportunity.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl or comments? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion approving item five D, approval ordinance, of ordinance number nineteen eighty-three?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion, and we have a second. Counselor, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five E, approval of Kingman Main Street Wind Phone Donation to the Parks and Recreation Department. Kingman Main Street would like to donate a wind phone to the Parks and Recreation Department. The Wind Phone Project is a disconnected telephone booth or structure, often found in quiet scenic locations, offering grieving people a therapeutic way to process loss and express emotions. The proposed location is the White Cliffs South Trailhead, located at seven one one North Fourth Street. The Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Trails Commission recommends approval. Mr. Miersman, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. I guess we're starting the video, or we have a quick video explaining this, and Sarah Ferrius here with King Main Street too, to answer any other questions, but we're not locked in on exactly where at the, the trailhead because we, we'd like for it to be an ADA-accessible location as well. So we're kind of not exactly sure where the exact location would be, but here, I think we can go ahead and start the video. It's of a, that was on the news, and it was, this was in your packet, but not everybody could probably download it.
... that requires no payment, amount of change will ever make it work again, but people come to the Hasiyama River Reserve to use it, saying what they need to get off their chest, saying what they waited too long to say. It has no dial tone, because it is a wind phone.
Start dialing your first phone number. Something about hearing the dial, you're back. You're something that's face, standing up there, and you're saying what you need to say. It's really powerful.
When Amy Dawson lost her daughter to a terminal illness in 2020, she made her own wind phone.
Some way to continue our bond, some way to continue our relationship, it had to keep being her mom. She was three young women.
It's very important.
Dawson created a website to track wind phone patients. There are four in Arizona, including one in Wickenburg, placed near by Park Supervisor Chris Matthews. The idea is the brainchild of Itaro Sasaki, Japanese man who put a phone booth in his garden in 2010 and opened it to the public following year after a devastating tsunami killed more than eighteen thousand people. Since then, wind phones have appeared in gardens, parks, and other public places.
It's just me, my mom.
Dawson has also heard from parents who lost their children.
And babies, not just babies, but maybe, maybe, maybe.
Not all users are grieving the loss of a loved one.
So if you ever see a disconnected phone in the woods, know that it has a purpose.
So basically that, you know, everybody grieves, and everybody grieves differently. So I think it just gives people a different place to go quietly and communicate with their loved ones, so. Sarah's here. I could answer any other questions. King Main Street's going to pay for the installation of it and do everything about it, and if there's any vandalism to it, repairs that need to be done, they're going to be, take care of that too, so.
Okay, welcome, Sarah.
Hi, guys. Can I show them that, just the picture of kind of the proposed?
Let's see.
I don't know if you noticed too, also on that phone, you could briefly see it in that, in that film.
Okay, thank you.
But it showed the instructions down, the white sheet there had instructions on how to use it, which...
Yeah.
You know, you'd think people would know, but that's actually a good thing.
Yeah, so I wanted to just show you this, this image here. Am I able to kind of blow that up a little, or?
I don't know if there's any way to do it.
Okay, so you can see my sister and I, this is really her passion project, but she couldn't be here today. But we were, we had a phone donated by Frontier, and we went to the, they have like a payphone graveyard, and we went and tried to find the best one, and there we are hauling it to her house. But this kind of showed you a little bit of an idea, and we want to maintain that beautiful, visible landscape there where people can take pictures and stuff. So we want to work together with Mike in finding the most appropriate spot for it. But one thing we're committed as Kingman Main Street to doing is we're going to paint it a nice tan color and have an artist paint some beautiful desert cactus. Oh, you can kind of see, this was just a rendering, but we'll really clean it up, paint it a nice tan color, and then have cactus, you know, some beautiful cactus painted on it, so it'll really blend in with the landscape. But we'll also have directions, so they know the story of the wind phone. And then the website, the national website, you can go to, and there's a map that will actually show you where it is in Kingman. So it would be one of those fun things where people come, and you know, maybe they go to different towns and look for a wind phone in whatever town they're in. But we're also committed to having a QR code on the phone where people can actually log in and sign a little guestbook and leave a little note, so we could come to you guys, you know, with reports of different projects we're working on, but tell you maybe some of these messages that people are leaving, or how many people have visited. So we just think it would be a really fun thing for Kingman. With all of the projects that we do with Kingman Main Street, we're committed to maintaining them. So we're going to have it painted with a UV protective barrier and a graffiti protective barrier. And then if there's any graffiti to it at all, we're committed to coming and cleaning it and maintaining it. We'll fully fund the project. So we just ask for your support and partnership in allowing us to find a good place for it and doing this project.
Any questions for Sarah?
Yes. Counselor.
Hello?
Hi.
So the, the phone itself is for grieving people, whatever circumstances. So they're talking in the phone, correct? And you want to make it ADA. Right?
You think it should be?
So you're going to have someone on an open-ended phone book or a phone booth, pouring their soul out to this phone with everybody at the trailhead? I mean, how are they going to get privacy doing this?
Like I said, we're not locked into that exact location. This is just that, we want it to be somewhere. We have some places that we think it can go, even at the White Cliffs wagon wheels trailhead, there's some nice areas there, off of that, that could be nice too. So we're not locked in on where it could go. And even at this trailhead, there's some areas slightly down from the parking area that it could possibly get to where it could be ADA accessible, or either on one, one end or the other of the, not right next to the trailhead sign where everybody's going to be going. Because I agree with what you're saying, it needs to be somewhere where it's kind of away from people a little bit, so.
Okay. And just so the public knows, this is not a connected phone, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is not connected, no.
For clarification. The one in Wickenburg that it just showed was actually in sort of a, a desert treat area, Palo Verdes and, and what about shade, as opposed to just being out in the sun where it's at? Because it would be nice to have a shaded structure probably. Or if the weather turns inclement, that doesn't mean it's still not going to be used.
Right.
So anyway, just thoughts. But otherwise, I think it's, it's another idea that it's, people are probably requesting it.
Yeah.
I'm sure. And it offers our citizens and visitors something else.
Yeah, and we've adopted the White Cliffs wagon wheel, wagon wheel trail system. So we are wanting to continue to make different improvements, so maybe a shade would come later on. And I do feel like phone booths are made a little bit for privacy, just the way that they're built. And that trailhead has some, you know, it's not really extremely busy. I think there would be some, some times where people could really sit there and have some time to theirself. I know I go up there and sit on the bench up there and just look at the beautiful landscape, so I think it'll be really special.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Sarah. Oh, yes. Counsel Dykens.
I had never heard of a wind phone until this. And I'm a little concerned over the fact that you have a phone. Number one, the appearance of a phone in a scenic area, to me, distracts from the view, having an old phone. Number two, there's nothing there that actually says the phone doesn't work. And if somebody needs to call nine one one and they don't have their cell phone, the battery went dead, they dropped it off the cliff, whatever, are they going to run to that phone thinking they can call nine one one? And of course, it wouldn't work. In, in the report, it didn't say anything about who would be responsible for the damage, graffiti, or anything else. And so I was, I'm concerned about that. And how frequently will the damage occur, especially with the fact it's in an area that it's not observed regularly? And how frequent is it going to be looked at to ensure that any damage to it or whatever is fixed? I'm going to be that lone wolf out here. I'm, I'm not sold on this. Because I think it's, I think it's going to distract from the beauty that we, that our parks people have worked so hard to have, and we're throwing the image of technology right in the middle of it. So I'm not, personally, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Mike or Sarah, do you want to address?
Yeah, may I speak to that? Okay, so I think that that's a valid point about the phone and maybe there being an emergency. I think we could really look into having some really clear marking that lets people know that this is not a working phone. But I just wanted to bring you to this website to show you... So let's see here, where is our...
I liked that first picture. In fact, when, when I first saw this project, I thought, even, we even used to have the old phone booths, but they were not like the English-style ones that we all imagined or have seen. But just a phone booth where it's, it might be open on the bottom, but it still protects you from the wind, anyway.
So this is how many wind phones there are currently in the United States. So it's really gaining traction, I think. And a lot of them are at parks and that sort of thing. We do agree with, you know, having something that doesn't look so out of place. So I think having it painted a nice sand color with a really beautiful desert landscape and finding a good location that it fits into nicely and isn't denis or that's really important to us. Also, we clean the trails once a month when we, we do trail cleaning, and so we can just commit to a schedule, if that helps you guys. I know many of us live downtown and work downtown and are frequent trail users, so I'm constantly looking myself at graffiti and sending messages to the Parks Department and letting them know about any graffiti. We, as far as our reputation as a nonprofit and the projects we've done, we helped to paint the mural behind the theater, and we just paid ten thousand dollars to have the artists come back and repaint that mural. So we are, we really care a lot about the projects that we do and that they're maintained. So I would just say that we commit to, to frequently checking on it.
Well, and Mike, in I think your opening remarks, you commented that they are, that Kingman Main Street is going to take total responsibility for this.
Correct. And also, our staff goes and dumps the trash every day and checks out every, all those facilities as well. So it would be somewhere where they could see it as well, so.
So if there was damage to it, obviously you'd, you'd call Sarah.
We believe that about, we believe that about graffiti too, that as soon as it's there, as soon as it's reported, we try to get taken care of quickly, because to have less graffiti is by having it not visible for very long, so.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to say, there wasn't anything in the backup, so to your comment, I was a little concerned about who was going to take care of the graffiti. I know we're having a lot of graffiti around our parks. Staff is spending a lot of time repairing, you know, bathrooms and, and lots of things. So if there could be some commitment from Main Street that you would maintain it, then I think that's my only thing. I look at this as like geocaching, right? It's just another way to put Kingman as, you know, a tagged location out in the universe so where people can find us, whether they're coming to look for wind phones, they're coming for Route sixty-six, they're coming for geocaching. So I, I was, it was a little odd to me at first, and then I read into it too, and I thought, this is not something I would do, but it's not for everyone, right? So that is my only concern, is that we please take care of the graffiti, and that if Main Street is going to commit, I, I trust that you guys will maintain it and, and make sure that it looks really nice all the time.
Oh, thank you, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor.
I have to do this. Is this going to be similar to Pokemon, where you're going to find your wind phone?
Hopefully.
Okay, good.
Good question. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Counselor, say leave.
I just want to thank Kingman Main Street for bringing this unique item to our community. I think it's, it is unique, e- even though it's spreading all over.
I think it is unique, even though it's spreading all over. It's a neat idea. And I can see how people would use it and benefit from it. And so thank you, Kingman Main Street. And I will make a motion to accept this donation of a wind phone.
Okay, we have a motion for item 5E. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, department reports. A. Kingman Municipal Court Department Report on Community Court. And turn some time over to our city magistrate, Judge Singer.
This isn't going against my time, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, and you know...
Let's start.
I'd start that clock.
And I know, Judge, it's always... Of course, you don't do this when you're... Because you're in front of us. But you're always more impressive when you're wearing your robes.
Yeah, so... Well, next time I'll wear it, so. Just wander the streets with it. Press escaped to show floating meeting controls.
You don't need to worry about it. Just hit the toggle.
Just hit what?
The arrows.
Okay, got it. Okay, there we go. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's my privilege to come to y'all tonight and present to y'all about a potential new problem-solving court that we're thinking of over at KMC. A way to give back to the city for so much that you all have given us. And that would be with this... Well, I just came up with community court. I couldn't think of a better name. I've worked on it for months, and this is what I've come up with. This started many months ago at one of our department head meetings. And, you know, sometimes for the court, I'll be honest, over the years, we get... I get a lot of ideas presented to me, and some are okay, and some are, you know, maybe not so great. And we get a lot of ideas thrown my way. And during the meeting, getting ready to start the meeting, and Jason was talking to me. And I don't know, maybe based on some of his experience in his prior employment. But he said, you know, what'd be a good idea is to have something that deals with like our abatements and our public nuisances in like a... One of your specialty courts, like your Veterans Court or things like that. And, you know, a lot of ideas I consider and may go through one ear and out the other. And as that was going out the other ear, it was kind of intriguing to me. And I thought, well, wait a second, because people pitch different things to me all the time. It's like, oh, okay. But this was something that was like, you know, when we do those retreats and everything like that, it always seems to be one of the big priorities for the city is, you know, city beautification and things like that. It helps with, you know, improving residency, improving tourism, and things like that. And so I was intrigued. Then I went back and researched it and was trying to figure out, well, how many other courts in the country have a problem-solving court that deals with, I guess, what you would call like city beautification? And I think I came up with a whole number of zero. So this would be kind of groundbreaking. So as I started looking into it, researching it, thinking about it, I have Alexis Tar with me, who's my specialty court's coordinator, and talking over with her. Because again, it'd be another problem-solving court that would fall, you know, in her lap between the two of us, trying to orchestrate this along with Veterans Court, the Domestic Violence Court, the Youth Court, thank you, Chief, that we started this year. And so, you know, one, is this something that would be doable? And two, you know, you gotta... If we're gonna spend the time on it, it's gotta be worthwhile and everything. And so I wanna go through kind of the PowerPoint that I put through and kind of get the temperature from you all to see if this is something that, you know, you think we should get behind. Again, the plan is to start this January 2026. And again, I couldn't come up with a better name for it. There are different quote-quote "community courts" throughout the country, in specialty courts, in problem-solving courts. So I just sort of attach that term to this. But again, with its kind of unique basis of focusing primarily just on city beautification. And again, the goals would be increase city beautification, hold property owners accountable, provide resource information to help, you know, those who may be struggling to help clean up their properties and find alternatives to convictions. You know, right now, there's kind of two different paths that we see in the municipal court for these properties that, you know, run amok, that either need to be abated or they're, you know, public nuisance junk and debris, they're public nuisance, you know, weed violations, whatever the situation may be. And individuals right now, you know, they... What we would target is they would, you know, receive citations kind of similar to how it is now for violations of the Kingman City Code, including Article 4, Public Nuisances and Property Maintenance, and those who would otherwise have abatement cases filed on them by the city attorney. So it's kind of been two prongs. We kind of just focus it, narrow it down to one, just basically going through our community court. Individuals would enter into suspensions of prosecution with the court and will then have their cases dismissed upon proof of compliance with the Kingman City Code. We've met with Carl and his office about, you know, basically giving us the keys to do that on the front end, kind of similar to what we do with the Youth Court, that if we can deal with it on the front end and do a suspension of prosecution, so the case stays right there. And then if you don't comply, then we can move forward and push it over to the city attorney's office for further prosecution. And, you know, Jason has been great. Sean has been great in our meetings and trying to figure out, yeah, that this really could work and could really be beneficial to the city of Kingman and kind of the mission that the city council has in moving forward on these priorities. So requirements coming into the program, they would enter into a suspension of prosecution agreement. So basically, the way you picture it is, if they've been cited, then the case sort of just stops there in purgatory with me. And then we will work with them in trying to... And give them the keys that if they comply with the terms and conditions of the suspension of prosecution, the case will be dismissed, no cost, things like that. Have them taking appropriate steps to remedy the outstanding issues, utilizing community resources to assist when needed. You know, sometimes people that are indigent and just don't have the resources because, you know, their yard or whatever has gotten too overgrown and, you know, fixed income and don't have the ability to do that. Well, let's try to figure out ways. We've got resources in this community. You know, we've also discussed the possibility of maybe using some of our, you know, community service projects. We'd just... We'd have to fine-tune that a little bit and just to make sure it makes sense and works. But to try to help those who want to get in compliance but just don't have the ability to do it. They attend monthly review hearings. You know, that's the big thing about these problem-solving courts is, you know, you keep your thumb on them and you have monthly review hearings. And we would have, you know, Sean and his group, you know, they're making monthly checks on the properties and seeing where we at or are in compliance. You know, we know some properties are probably in such bad shape that it's probably not just gonna be one month, that there... It's gonna be all a miracle, and it's gonna be all up to code. So doing the monthly checks, and we found that's very motivational probably in all of our problem-solving courts because people don't want to come to court. And so what's one of the incentives to get this done quicker? You don't have to come to court anymore. So... But, you know, keeping their feet to the fire and having them come every month until they're in compliance, I think, is a good thing. And of course, the catch-all, any other requirement deemed appropriate by the judge with my magic robe, so my incredible powers. So, you know, you always like to have that catch-all to think, well, maybe there's something else we need to do. Or there's some... There's always gonna be some outlier that you think, well, maybe we need to go down this path or this... Another path. So I don't wanna just, you know, cage myself in and saying, well, it's just gotta be these things. I just wanna be able to assist these people as much as possible and assist the city of Kingman. The team members, this is kind of gives you kind of outlier of who everybody would be on the team between, you know, the judge, Alexis is the program coordinator. You know, the city attorney more, I think, in the foundational part. But then if we need to get them involved later, if we just can't get people in compliance, you know, the different community resources that we'll hopefully expand and bring onboard. And then the Neighborhood Services Officers and obviously Development Services, who have really, you know, we've been working hand in hand and trying to make this concept possibly work. Again, while there are other community courts, specialty court programs, doing different types of things, this is believed to be the first one in the nation that focuses solely on community beautification. As I alluded to, the Kingman Municipal Court currently operates several other specialty court programs, including a Veterans Treatment Court, Domestic Violence Court, and a Youth Court. I believe this program will fit in well with some of the other models currently used. The program will allow Neighborhood Services to cite violators of ordinances 7-161 to 7-186. Again, that's in the code about... That's in the public nuisance arena. After giving the property owners a 30-day notice for the purpose of increasing city beautification, which has been a primary focus of elected officials in the Kingman City Council. So it's not like they're gonna just be going out and just boom, just citing people right off the bat. You know, they're gonna give them a 30-day notice. And then if the 30-day notice is not, you know, successful in getting them to, you know, be in compliance, then they can go out and cite them. To make this program most effective, the Kingman insurance 7-184, the Kingman City Code, will need to be amended to give individuals 30 days from the date of citation to appear before the Kingman Municipal Court for arraignment. There's a kind of a quirk in the code that says 10 days, which that's not... That's not the way it should be. I don't know why it's like that. So that needs to be corrected and fixed. I mean, Arizona law gives everybody 30 days, I mean, from citation to arraignment. So I don't know why in the Kingman City Code specifically for these offenses, it says 10 days. Something I really never noticed until we started getting into this. And it's like, uh, that doesn't really follow Arizona law at all. So that needs to be changed, just as we're looking at. It's probably the only thing that needs to be changed for us to move forward with this because it needs to be 30 days to go along with Arizona statutes and Arizona law. Again, the incentive for those entering into the Kingman Community Court will be for individuals to not have convictions for these offenses, as well as to have their cases dismissed without any cost when in compliance. Probably saves time from the city attorney's office, those abatement cases are up there. And I just think this is probably a way to, you know, to take care of a lot of issues. You know, I don't want it to seem like, well, we wanna go out and, you know, just start hammering people left and right. And we're, you know, we're citing them and giving them, you know, criminal citations and things like that. And that's not the point of it. The point is, you know, similar to our other problem-solving courts, is to give the, you know, individuals the opportunity to remedy these situations while also for the benefit of the community. I think it's the same with, you know, veterans, same with the domestic violence offenders, it's same with the juveniles. It's the same thing. You have a target population, and you want to address this for the benefit of the community while also helping the individuals. So hopefully, it's a win-win situation across the board. For... On the court side, in order to operate a problem-solving court that's not in the statutes, which obviously this one is not, yeah, I would have to get approval from the presiding judge of the county, Judge Moss, and which I already have. I spoke with him and Judge McCoy. And I could tell initially, when I didn't just get the blanket approval, like I didn't like for the DV Court and things like that, that they were... Had some concerns. And yes, they were confused about this because nobody's ever heard of anything like this. So I met with them up at the Superior Court a couple of weeks ago and explained to them, you know, the nuances of it and, you know, how I see this going and how I don't see it as a big detriment to court operations or cost-wise. I don't see it as being, you know, costly or things like that, or that we're just, you know, sending these Neighborhood Services Officers out there like the Gestapo and just going and hammering people and everything like that. But it would benefit the city, and it would benefit, I think, the individuals too. So at the end of the day, they're getting out of there as long as they comply with their cases dismissed and no costs. We're not gonna assess some court costs on this. And it's actually better than where we're at right now because if you get cited for these things, either the abatement route, which is very time-consuming, or you go the public nuisance route pursuant to Kingman City Code 7-161 moving forward, you know, then you're looking at these, having misdemeanor convictions on your record. All these people come to me. Sometimes they just plead guilty, and it's like, mm, okay, well, okay, you've got a misdemeanor conviction on your record. Congratulations. This kind of gives us an alternative, and I think it's a win-win across the board. And if I didn't think we could handle it, again, we're grateful for the council and the city manager and everybody for, you know, now we have an assistant specialty courts coordinator. So now we got two people working these... On these programs that take a lot of time. But we can handle it. Questions, thoughts?
Thank you, Judge Singer.
Mayor, could I just make one comment to kind of add to that? I think what this does is currently, you know, you have code enforcement. They're the folks that go out there and do that initial interaction. And it's, you have 30 days to clean up the property, or we're gonna tell the city attorney, and then the city attorney's gonna file these charges. So they don't see the initial hammer. So now it's, you'll have 30 days to clean up that property. Are you gonna get cited into court? And then once they're in court, they get to deal with the judge, which is a lot scarier prospect than waiting for the city attorney to file charges or waiting for code enforcement to come back. And then we can make those steps as we move along. I think this will accelerate the cleanup rates is my hope. Because, you know, and no fault to code enforcement or anybody. I think when you go, okay, they're almost done cleaning up or they're moving forward. And I think there's still gonna be that aspect of working with those individuals. But there's gonna be a bigger motivation of, yeah, you are going to court. You are gonna get a citation from the code enforcement officials. So I do see it as a bigger hammer with a great carrot to move people along, so.
Well, and the ultimate goal is cleaning up our community.
That's the plan, you know.
And I like the accountability aspect. And of course, as you mentioned, and Carl just repeated it again, no one likes the whole, I have to go to court.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
I don't like it.
Yeah. And you get paid to be there. So I think it's a great idea. And you already have a proven track record with the Veterans Treatments Court, the Domestic Violence Court, and of course, the Youth, the Juvenile Court. So we appreciate you being willing to take this on. Any other comments or questions for Judge Singer?
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanna know what qualifies for nuisance and the difference between nuisance and abatement? Just because I wanna get it clarified. Maybe that's a question for Carl.
So it's gonna be... There's a whole lot of stuff, but you're talking about the weeds, the junk and debris that's on that property. That it's...
So when is a prop... Okay, so I'm specifically asking about weeds.
Okay.
And what qualifies a property from moving from a nuisance to an abatement situation?
Well, an abatement is to clean up the nuisance. So there's... I'd have to look, because there's a growth rate of, I don't know, how tall the weeds may or may not be.
Okay.
What kind of weeds, when that's gonna jump in? So, yeah, that's the plan.
That's fine.
This gentleman over here might be able to answer much better than I can.
Okay. Well, kind of where I'm going with this, is this gonna be for residential properties and commercial properties alike?
Yes.
Okay. So how are you going to handle commercial property owners that don't live in the area?
Cite them.
Okay. So we're not gonna give them an opportunity to go through the...
We'll give... Oh, sure. We'll give them 30-day notice.
Okay.
And I would expect that y'all would send them a certified letter and say, you need to get your property or hire somebody to come out here and get your property in order.
And when the judge says cite them, that puts them into this process.
Yes.
Right. So it puts them into the process, you cite them, then they have to start coming to your court?
When they're represented, yes.
Yes. So it will be somebody that represents them, or hopefully, they have someone in their community that then will go to visit you in court on a however... Whatever regiment you decide, right?
Monthly.
Okay. Until they graduate from this court?
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be like that court where we're gonna have cake and celebrate and things like that. But I think it would just be, hey, here's a piece of paper, your matter's dismissed.
Yeah, just humor me. I don't think there's gonna be pomp and circumstance at the moment. Are there gonna be focus areas within... Are there gonna be corridors that we're gonna be focusing on or...
That's not me. It should not be me.
That's a Sean question.
Are we talking specifically about weeds or publications?
Well, either or.
So the answer to that is yes, right?
Okay.
I feel in doing this, it... Um, I, I feel in doing this, it, it's shifting some of the workload to our great friend Judge Singer and his, his group, which I feel is gonna be able to allow us to take on more cases.
Okay.
So, um, a lot, a lot of our, a lot of the judgment we use and, and how we approach things and how much time we give people has a lot to do with the existing cases that are with the attorney, because when we send them to the attorney, we're, we're not done with them, right? We're not done with them. And, in this case, uh, the courts, the court is gonna be managing, hey, can you get us a satisfactory on this, right? And, and that's gonna be every single month on the cases that are within, within the, the judge's purview.
Okay.
So.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I, I, I think this is, this is a great evolution in beautifying our, our town.
I apologize, I don't mean to be smart when I say about the corridor or whatever we said, but that would be like me saying, okay, well, I want the cops this weekend to go out to this certain area and start, you know, monitoring that and bringing people into court. I mean, that's, that is not for me to do.
Right.
And that's completely, that would be wrong for me to say. However, that's up to them to cite into court, I'm not telling them who to cite, when to cite, why, but I'm giving them the tools to be able to, um, be able to address these, these matters or whatever, but there's still gotta be that line between us.
Sure, okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Counsel Savage.
Don't go anywhere, Sean. Uh, no, thank, thank you, you answered a couple of questions, kinda what I wanna touch on that a little more, um, especially for residential. How are your certifying mail-in to the owners, correct?
Uh, so the, the statute requires us to attempt notification in three different ways. We can hand deliver a cer, a, a, a letter, we can certify, well, in order for us to take it through the process with the attorney's office, we have to, uh, meet all, all others or hand deliver, right? So essentially what that, what will be happening is they would have already received their, their delivery of notice of violation. Uh, per state statute, they would have the thirty days, on the thirty days if they're not in compliance, we would then serve them with the citation, which gets them into the court, right? So i- if, for those of you that have been around for a long time, this, this has been an issue for the amount of time it takes for us to get a case into court. Um, essentially, we're looking at sixty days as opposed to, um, ninety-ish days, depending upon the caseload at the attorney's office to get something to the court. So this gets them in the court immediately, because me and my crew going out there saying, okay, well, we're gonna send this to the attorney's office and they're gonna file charges, that's a lot different than saying, uh, here's your citation, you need to be in court on this day and time.
Okay, now this one might open a can of worms. Um, renters, where does the, where does the fault lie then? Um, because if you're contacting the owners of the property, but not the renters, now are the renters gonna come back on the, or the property owners gonna come back on the renters?
They can.
They can.
And, and that's the way the statute are designed in Arizona. Ultimately, the responsibility of the property is who owns it. And now if the owner is renting it, it's their responsibility to ensure that the renter is taking care of these things.
So they may have to change their contracts.
They, they may have to, right? Uh, the, the other part of that too, and, and we really truly try to, and, and this is where it comes in, uh, Vice Mayor's question of, when does it become abatement over criminally being charged, right? Um, we cannot hold the tenant responsible if we're going out and doing an abatement. Everything to deal with that has to do with, um, the, uh, the property owner. In the event that we go out, we make contact with a renter, um, there's, there's been, there's been a situation to where we've made contact with the renter, th- the renter tells us to keep on marching down the road, uh, we then go to the property owner, um, property owner says, I don't know what to do but to evict them, right? Well, their eviction processes can take a long time. Um, going to the city attorney, the, the actual, um, solution to that was, all right, they're gonna file charges of these criminally against the tenant, right? So, so there's some options and ways to go on how we do it. I prefer, as the judge says, I prefer not to go the criminal route, because having something on your record or misdemeanor for junk and debris or overgrown weeds, that just doesn't sit well with me, doesn't mean we haven't done it and we won't do it. I think what this does is this allows the judge to be involved very early and the judge can help to make those determinations on, hey, do you know what, we've given you more than enough opportunity, a- and at that point in time, the judge even has that power to say, okay, well, we're gonna go this route, here you're gonna go abate the property and, and we have those people there to take that responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Sean or for Judge?
Yeah.
Counsel Saly.
I just have a couple of comments. I really wanna thank you for taking this on. This has been a concern of mine for years. There are other communities in Arizona that are so clean and I always wonder how they do that. How are they accomplishing, um, you know, staying on top of the property owners that wouldn't necessarily want to keep their properties that clean? And so I'm really hopeful now that we're kind of on the path forward. You know, we have a, quite a few commercial properties in town that, that are in those major corridors, everyone's passing by them, they don't take care of them. We also have, uh, residences in almost every neighborhood that are, they have so much trash and junk that they are a hazard to everyone that lives around them. If they catch on fire, people are gonna be seriously harmed. So I just, I, I just thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking this on and I can't wait to see how it turns out, but I know you'll do a good job with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I know this isn't an action item, but again, you know, I guess I'd like the temperature of the council.
I think we, you have our support.
Okay.
And Mayor, could I make one last comment?
Yes.
I, I do believe this will effectuate maybe quicker and more cleanup, but it's not the ultimate solution. You have two people in code enforcement and it's a big town.
It's just another tool though that.
It's another tool to help.
Right.
But, and I don't wanna speak for that department telling they need more people, but two people is not a lot.
No.
For the problems we have in this town, and that's been the issue.
Maybe if we have this program, then, you know, maybe additional employee, I mean, I'm not, I'm not advocating for them, but I mean, you know, uh, I, I, I got, 'cause I, I, I'll say this too, because it's something that I have talked to Jason and Sean about too, it's gotta be worth my time too. I mean, I got a lot going on across the street. I mean, I got, this is gonna be my fourth specialty court, I, and, you know, that's what people sometimes, they just says, oh, you're the Veterans Court. Veterans Court is a small part of my life. I mean, we do a lot over there from protective orders, justice record, criminal cases, from, you know, juvenile, I mean, we, we do a heck of a lot over there, and so this has gotta be worth our time too. If we're only getting one or two cases, what are, what are we doing? Yeah, I, I, again, I'm not saying just send them out like gangbusters, but it, it does have to be worth our time too, because I'm gonna be, when I figure out what day I'm gonna put this on, I, it's gonna be X-ing out another block of my time, and so if we're not getting these, these cases, because I don't know, they're, they just can't get to them, whatever, then it, it's just not worth my while. So, um, again, I wanna try this for about a year, starting in January, and, and hopefully we can, we can do some good. We're, we're ready to rock and roll, but, you know, it's, it's gotta be worth it too.
Right.
So.
Mayor.
Judge, we appreciate it, yes.
Not to belabor the, the deal here, but I, I, I just wanna express appreciation to the judge as well. Having been through, um, these abatements, going through code enforcement, having, having experience in that area, um, one of the struggles is, is really, uh, having a judge that, that considers the importance of that abatement. You know, with, with all the different crimes that are out there, murders and, and robberies and all of that, a lot of times abatements get put on the side. So, so I think having a program like this, i- i- it will really keep it front and center and, and keep the importance of, of that, that, um, city cle, keeping the city clean. So, thank you.
Right, once again, thank you for all your comments, Judge Singer. Onward and forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That court graduation tomorrow at one thirty, y'all are invited, thank you.
Thanks for announcing that too. I am gonna turn the meeting over to our Vice Mayor, I need to go to attend a, a family matter. So anyway, once again, have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, we're gonna move on to department reports, uh, six B, Kingman Area Regional Transit or CART report on benches and shelters at bus stops. Welcome, Sheri.
Hi, good morning, or good evening, thank you. All right. Perfect, thank you, Erin. Um, so, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Um, I was asked to provide a report on seating at our bus stops, and I'd like to begin by sharing what facilities are currently available for our patrons. Uh, so CART operates four deviated routes. Uh, we operate the yellow, green, blue, and red that meet hourly at Walmart, where there currently two shelters with seating. Uh, in addition to those two, several others are located at some of our higher use stops, such as doctors' offices and retail centers. Oops, let me get back. Uh, so on our blue route, we have twenty-five stops, uh, seven shelters with seating and five benches along the route. Uh, if you can see, I've kind of identified the shelters with the rectangles and the red circles are where we have just the benches. Our green route has twenty-two stops, seven shelters, and five benches. And our red route has twenty-seven stops, six shelters, five benches. And then lastly, our yellow route has thirty-one stops, three shelters, eleven benches. Uh, the photo here on your left is the shelter at the Walmart. The shelter on the right is the style that most others are along the routes. Our benches, these are a couple of our benches, one out inside, outside the court on Oak, and then the other one there is fairgrounds in Pasadena in a residential area. Uh, we would definitely like to add additional seating, and I do plan to include a request for that in our next grant application. So whenever we add, we install a bench or shelter, whether it be an existing stop or a new stop, it triggers a couple of things with the FTA. So then, once we do that, we need to make sure that it triggers the ADA requirement. So especially if it's funded through federal programs, uh, everything, a single dollar of federal money covers the whole thing. So sometimes you might have to, if doing a shelter, you might need to do the concrete bases, you might need to update the surrounding pathway areas to meet the ADA requirements, um, to assure street regulations and access. And then the other thing is it'll trigger, uh, NIPA requirement, uh, National Environmental Policy Act, uh, so that then the federal government would, would determine that that was an acceptable location. Usually, um, something like this, we'd be able to get a categorical inclusion. So some of the options that we have, they range anywhere from shelters to benches. Um, these are, some of the more expensive would require more, um, ADA upgrading. We have a lot of our areas that, um, currently aren't accessible, no curb, sidewalk, uh, but these are some of the options that there are. Uh, many of our stops are in residential areas, and in those areas, I think a better option for those is, it's called a semi-seat, and this has been becoming popular in many areas. It allows seating, um, it allows seating, but not, um, encouraging loitering or graffiti, and it's much less expensive. The most recent quote that I've gotten on these are, they're about twelve hundred dollars. And then you don't have to do quite as much of an improvement with the pad, and you, they're also, you can adapt them with lighting, uh, as well, which we really, really could use that at many of our stops, um, in the dark neighborhoods. So, um, with that, I just wanted to kinda give you, um, an idea of what we currently have, what we can do, and let you know that there are plans to improve, um, some of the seating availability for our patrons. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you for that. Questions, Counselors? Counselor Savage?
Hello.
Hi.
Do all stops require a bench?
No, they don't. Benches are not a requirement, um, but once we do add a bench, then there are other requirements that come into place.
Okay, I understand that. Um, I don't know if this is possible or not, um, color coordinating the benches to the routes?
Well, some of our, some of our routes, um, service multiple, or some of our stop service multiple routes.
So we can paint them different colors?
But, but we do, but we do have, um, markings we have on the sign, we try to keep those updated with the route, um, or that it serves.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I was the one that I think, I think I was the one that requested this presentation, so thank you very much for doing that. Um, a question I have is there, is there a way of finding, whether it be actual stops or areas where we have more seniors that are using the bus system, where those could be first approached for benches or the buddy seats or whatever they're called?
Sometimes, so many times, um, if somebody, if somebody wants to contact me and request a stop or a bench at their location, we can certainly look to see if that's something that we can accommodate. Uh, many times I get requests and, and some people upset as well, because we may put a bench in an area, but many of our stops are in residential areas. Not everybody wants a bus bench or even a bus stop sign, um, in front of their home. And so we don't wanna encroach on, on that, um, but so we've had to remove some because they become then just, uh, sometimes a place for loitering, um, graffitied, we're constantly painting them. So, uh, you know, at least our, our wooden ones, the ones that I showed you there are the ones that we have primarily around in the city at most of our stops, but we do also have, um, wooden benches with concrete, um, bases, and those often get tagged, um, and become a, a spot for loitering. Recently, we had to remove a bench, um, from in front of the, from, across the street from the Kingman Food Bank, because it was becoming a nuisance for the property owners there, because there was often, um, just loitering and, and trash and graffiti, and that was hard to keep up with. So we used to, um, have several more, but over time, we have had to remove them, because they just become difficult. I've probably doing the, the signs, um, putting signs on there saying, you know, please, this is, you know, this is a bench we need with an image of, you know, an older person sitting on the bench, these are needed, but continued graffiti and damage is going to cause it to go away, and that nothing's really helped. So that's one of the struggles that we have. But certainly, to answer your question, if somebody is requesting a stop and, or, I'm sorry, a bench, then I always look into see if that's something that we can accommodate. But you need to make sure that you're getting, um, the homeowner's, um, support from it too. You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, item number seven, announcements by Mayor, council members, and city manager. Um, Manager Walsh?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Savage?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, Counsel Ward? Counselor Staley?
Nothing.
Counsel Dykens? I just wanted to remind everybody, upcoming, September twenty-seventh is our fifty-fifth Annual Andy Devine Day's Parade. It starts at ten AM between first and fifth on Beal. Please contact the Parks and Rec if you would like to participate, everybody's welcome to participate, it's free. Uh, the theme this year is How the West Was Won, and again, the parade starts at ten. Uh, the deadline to enter the parade is September fifteenth. All right, item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Anybody? Counsel Dykens?
Um, I had the event, or the appreciation of going out to the golf course, meeting the golf pro, and seeing the golf, the new golf carts that have the GPS system on there. One of the things that, that I saw while we were out there was an area that could be fairly easily changed into a large retention pond for rain-
fairly easily changed into a large retention pond for rainwater runoff. Um, it's located between uh number sixteen tee and number sixteen fairway. And I would just like to have a report from staff on, is it feasible to do? Would there be a benefit for the golf course for the neighbors downstream as far as preventing flooding and stuff? Um, and what type of cost would there be in either fencing or gate valves or filter or whatever?
Okay. Manager Walsh?
All right. Um, we will not have an executive session, so we are adjourned.